I call the Tuesday, August the 13th, 2019, meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order. I'll ask my colleagues on council to stand as Reverend Terry Taylor, the pastor of Port Norfolk Baptist Church, gives the invocation. Then I'll ask everybody to stand as Councilman Bill Moody leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Gracious, loving Father, we thank you for your presence with us today and your promised presence with us always. We pray that you would be with this council and with these citizens as we meet together this evening. Help us to be able to know your Spirit of love and unity. Guide us as we try to work together to make this city a better place for all of us and for your glory. We pray that you would be with us and just guide our decision process and just help us to have the wisdom that comes from you alone, for it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask my colleagues on council to indicate your presence by hitting the yes button, please. And Madam Clerk, we have 100% attendance. We have a quorum. We have next the consideration of the adoption of minutes. We have the minutes of a call meeting of July 22nd, 2019. The minutes of a call meeting of July 23rd, 2019. And we have the minutes of a regular meeting of July 23rd, 2019. And we have the minutes of a call meeting of July 30th, 2019. We'll consider one motion to adopt all four sets of these minutes. There's such a motion.
Go for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Here and done. Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And next, we have the presentation of a proclamation which will declare back-to-school week. And Dr. Patton, would you make some comments about this?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. The proclamation that will be read and presented to the school board chair and school board members and Dr. Bracy, who's here, is the vision of both Dr. Bracy and I working to bring a total community engagement and involvement in the beginning of school. So many times, as we were just talking, that we emphasized things. Get some new shoes, get some new clothes. But we wanted to take a whole week to talk about the importance of encouraging our children for all of our community, our businesses, to have in their windows well wishes for our students who are going back to school. And I shared with them, and on last Saturday, the city of Chicago for 90 years have hosted their back-to-school week and their Bud Billiken Back-to-School Parade. And on last Saturday, there were a million people that lined King Boulevard in Chicago as every school in Chicago and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of children participated in that parade. And you can go online and see the significance of a whole community encouraging kids to do well in school. And we're hoping that this is not just a week. But when you see kids doing the school year, engage them. How is school? How are you doing in school? What are your dreams? What are your aspirations? So that they will know that all of us care about the importance of education and a total community commitment for them exceeding to excellence. Thank you, Mayor, and members of council for the comment.
Thank you. With that, I'll ask the Chairman of the School Board, Claude Parrott, and the members of the School Board to join me, along with Dr. Bracy. And Dr. Patton, would you come down, please, too?
Madam Clerk, will you read the proclamation?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Portsmouth and the Portsmouth Public Schools have partnered together and designated August 24th through 30th, 2019, as Portsmouth Back-to-School Week. And whereas this partnership serves as a commitment to making the 2019-20 school year a huge success for our city, students, parents, educators, and administrators. And whereas the week-long back-to-school celebration filled with events is designated to spark energy and excitement for the upcoming year. These events will bring citizens, businesses, and faith-based organizations together to support and bring awareness to the importance of education and school attendance. And whereas our entire community plays a critical role to ensure each student has the tools and skills necessary for success. And whereas the City of Portsmouth and the Portsmouth Public Schools proudly celebrate our students, parents, educators, and administrators as we prepare for a successful school year. Now therefore, I, John Earl Rowe, Jr., Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, do hereby proclaim August 26th through 30th, 2019, as Portsmouth Back-to-School Week in Portsmouth and encourage all citizens to support our teachers and students as they prepare for a safe and prosperous school year.
Thank you. And as the clerk read the proclamation, we were reading it up here. It is signed. And it's with great pleasure that I signed this to declare this week as back-to-school week. And I'd like to underscore, if I could put this in italics and bold, I encourage all citizens to support our teachers and students as they prepare for a safe and prosperous school year. And it's my great pleasure to give you this proclamation.
And will you say some words?
Absolutely. Mayor Rowe and members of City Council and all those that assembled this evening, I want to thank you for placing education. You know, we've talked about education first, economic development, and then public improvement improves. And on behalf of the Portsmouth School Board, members of the Portsmouth School Board, and all the employees and parents and students, we thank you for this proclamation and back-to-school week and that we're looking forward to all of the activities that will happen that week and that we will emphasize academic excellence. Dr. Bracy had his leadership team meeting today. And at this point, all of our schools, none of our schools are denied accreditation. That's awesome. And then we have 14 of the 19, but we have two schools that are on the edge, and we've appealed to the state. So it's possibly that 16 of the 19 schools will be accredited. So we've come a long ways under this superintendent. We're very proud of this school system, and we thank you very much for this proclamation.
Well, thank you, sir.
And we too are very, very proud of our school system. Dr. Bracy.
Thank you, Mayor Rowe. I just want to thank you all for the proclamation. Dr. Patton, as she mentioned, the two of us started brainstorming and thought it would be a great idea. So I'm looking forward to the week of activities that we have planned at the meeting today. As Mr. Parrott mentioned, I share it with our administrators, and we're looking forward to pulling together our students, our clubs and activities, and participating in the parade to start something that can be an annual event of back-to-school to get everyone excited about school. So we're looking forward to it, and I thank you for the collaboration.
You're welcome. I think it would be appropriate to applaud the back-to-school week.
And I think that he wants a photo. This brings us to the next item on our agenda, which are public hearings, 19-293. And we have two public hearings on zoning matters tonight. Our protocol will be this. I'll ask the city clerk to read the caption for the public hearing. And then I'll ask the applicant to come to the lectern. The applicant will be given 10 minutes to explain his or her application. And then after that, I'll call upon Dr. Patton, and she most likely will ask Mr. Bob Baldwin to come to the lectern to answer any questions by City Council. And then I'll open the public hearing. And you do not have to sign up to speak at the public hearing. Just come to the lectern, and you'll be given five minutes. And with that, Madam Clerk, will you read the protocol for speakers, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the form and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our first public hearing is U.P.-19-09. Will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Park View. Robert C. Barclay, IV Esquire of Cooper Spong and Davis, on behalf of ABS Link Virginia, Inc., requests a use permit for an adult daycare center at 230 Fort Lane, 927 Crawford Parkway, and 231 Hatton Street. The properties are zoned historic limited office. The properties are designated on the future land use map in the city's comprehensive plan for high-density, single-family development as well as institutional public use. Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And if the applicant is in the chambers, if you'll come to the lectern, please, you'll be, please state your name and address, and you'll have 10 minutes to explain your application.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, members of council, Madam Manager, City Attorney, and Ms. Clerk, and the folks here in the audience tonight. My name is Robert Barclay. My business address is 200 High Street, Suite 500, Portsmouth, Virginia, 23704. And I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant and First Home Care Corporation, who is the actual operator of the property. I have with me Ms. Tamara Coleman, who is the operations manager of the facility. And after I say a few words, I'm going to turn it over to her and let her fill you in further on what actually happens at the property. As you can see from the slide over there, these are three buildings on three separate parcels between Fort Lane and Hatton Street along Crawford Street. Several of them, two of them are historic structures. And what they would like to do is to receive a conditional use permit to operate an adult daycare facility on the property. These properties have been in use by this company since the 1970s. Originally, they were operated as residential care facilities for youth with mental disabilities and/or substance abuse problems. That use was discontinued some time ago, and now they seek to operate the properties strictly for adult daycare services. And these would be adults with mental disabilities. They have received all the appropriate licensure from the Commonwealth of Virginia to operate such a facility. And the need for the conditional use permit was discovered in the business license application process with Commissioner of the Revenue. And then under the current zoning code, a use permit was needed. In working with the staff, we've arrived at several different conditions, and the applicant is in agreement with all of those conditions and is happy to perform them. I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Coleman, and after she introduces herself, she can tell you a little bit about the operations at the facility.
Good evening, council members. My name is Tamara Coleman, and my address is 5 Dogland Avenue, Portsmouth, Virginia, 23702. I am here tonight representing the properties of 230 Fort Lane, 927 Crawford Parkway, and 231 Hatton Street. We are a day support program for individuals with intellectual and/or developmental disabilities. We serve individuals from ages 16 to 64. They come there, they're there from 9:00 to 4:00, Monday through Friday. When they're there, they gain independent living skills, they gain activities, daily living skills, communication skills, and social skills. We have a staff of 13 individuals, and they are all very well, highly trained to work with this population, to make sure they get the skills that they need. Some of the activities they engage in at 231 Hatton Street and 927 Crawford Parkway is they go out in the community every day. In the community, they do things. They volunteer at Oasis, they volunteer for Meals on Wheels, they volunteer with the Food Bank of Southeastern Virginia. So part of our program goals is to help individuals become productive citizens in society.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. And I'd just like to point out a couple things. One is the use that's proposed is a less intensive use than was actually operated on the property under the prior code for many years, since this is moving to a less intensive use. And I believe that, you know, Ms. Coleman or I could answer any questions you might have, and so we're happy to do that.
Thank you, sir. Any member of council have a question for the applicant? The Chair recognizes the Vice Mayor. And then next, we'll have Councilman Glover.
Ms. Coleman, the license through the state, Virginia, is that a one-year, is that an annual license, or was it extended?
You mean our license through a DDHS?
Yes.
It's a triennial license.
Triennial license.
Yes, ma'am.
Great.
Thank you. Councilman Glover.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Coleman, you said the hours of operation were from 9:00 to 4:00?
Yes, sir.
So there won't be any overnight activities or anything like that?
No, sir. Not at all, Monday through Friday from 9:00 to 4:00.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Dr. Patton?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, I'll ask Mr. Bob Baldwin to come forward.
Thank you, Dr. Patton, and good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, members of City Council. As you've been apprised, this is a use permit application for an adult daycare center. This went to the Planning Commission for a public hearing at their meeting on July 2nd, 2019, and the Planning Commission voted 6 to 0 to recommend approval of the use permit subject to the six conditions that are contained within staff report materials. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Does any member of council have a question? And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Baldwin, I think I've asked this before, but I'm going to ask it again because I didn't like to answer the first time. Condition number four on here is about parking. And I've heard from a lot of neighbors to this facility that since, particularly since this use is going to go, the population using these buildings is going to go down, but yet our code seems to require additional parking, which seems kind of silly. And so they're going to take a pretty piece of green grass and put seven parking spots on what appears to be a pretty piece of grass that either the residents or the neighbors or the neighborhood kids might enjoy using. Is that?
Well, let me explain the parking situation. It's a little bit more, it's a little bit more complicated than that, of course. In this situation here, you have a facility that'll be using 14 staff members, serving 43 clients. So there is a, you know, a parking generation different than an overnight facility would have. But regardless of that, our zoning ordinance speaks to, when you have a change of use, of which this is going from overnight residential to adult daycare, the parking has to meet the current parking requirement. And the current parking requirement, I believe, is nine total spaces. Now, there's multiple ways to get at that. As this application was going through, we were unable to get resolution to them to bring it to council with the parking issue completely resolved. So it's a very kind of soft condition that says you build a parking lot, it has to meet city parking requirements. They will need to provide nine parking spaces. There's a couple of different ways to do that. They could have parking at each, at each structure, a couple pieces, parking places here. They would just have to be brought up to current standard. Most of their parking spaces, you know, are old and don't meet a parking standard. So they could do that. They could also, there's potential for shared parking. I know there's a, you know, parking lot, a church parking lot near them. The code does provide for shared parking. You have to have an agreement with the owner of that shared parking lot that has to get recorded to make it permanent parking. That's an option. And then obviously, the third one, which is one we sort of ended up, the last, sort of last resort, you're going to need to put in, you know, a small parking lot. So the applicant has multiple ways to solve their parking situation. That condition is to make sure whichever way it goes, it has to be a code-compliant parking facility.
So what I'm voting on doesn't mandate turning that grass into a parking lot?
That's correct. That just, basically, we're just saying where you build a parking facility, if you build it there, it's got to be a code-compliant parking. We will work with them in any way we can to try to resolve it. There were a lot of meetings that were held on this application, just could not get that issue completely tied down without holding them up endlessly and trying to resolve it. We didn't think that was really necessary for the small number.
I mean, it's kind of unusual for a neighborhood to say they don't want to park.
Right. And we're very, we're very well on that. We're working with them the best we can to resolve the issue with the least amount of impact.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lucas Burke now has the floor.
Mr. Baldwin, thank you. My question might be related back to the owner or, but now they mentioned parking, is there any use of any oversized vehicles to transport? They'd be going in the community every day. Will there be any buses or vans?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you. Councilman Moody now has the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Baldwin, is there agreement with the applicant and the church as far as parking spaces?
Well, my understanding, there's some informal, we'll go back to what the code requires. My understanding is an informal discussion with the churches indicated a willingness. But, you know, we have to take it to the point of actually having a formal agreement. But I do understand the churches indicated a willingness to share parking with the facility.
So a formal agreement is in the works?
That would be up to the applicant. Yes, that's their option. And so if they wanted to take that route, that would certainly be available to them. The code provides for that. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilman Patton.
Is this a new facility or is this a facility that's already in operation?
Well, this was a facility that prior had been used for adult daycare. This is a different use, I mean, used for adult residential use overnight. Our zoning ordinance differentiates that type of a use where you're doing an overnight facility, smaller number of people, from a daycare operation. So there are two separate land uses in the zoning code.
But they have 43.
That's their proposal. That's their proposal. They're not, that's, as was indicated, they were in the licensing process when they, when they came across the use permit requirement. So they don't have that. That's their proposal, 43 clients.
And are they sure they have a triennial license? Or do they have a?
Well, you need to discuss their licensing situation with them. We don't get into their state licensing requirements.
Any further questions from council? Thank you, sir. Again, this is a public hearing on U.P.-19-09. And when I declare the public hearing open, if you desire to speak, please come to the lectern, state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes. The public hearing is open. Is there anybody who wants to speak in either for or against or just speak to this particular Does anyone want to speak at this public hearing? Here and none, this public hearing is closed so that we can have this matter on its first reading. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion to approve this on its first reading. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, the motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to our second public hearing, 19-293B, which is U.P.-19-10. And would you read the caption of the public hearing, please?
Yes, sir. Port Norfolk. Susan Slater is requesting a use permit to operate a microbrewery at 346 Broad Street. The property is owned by Port Norfolk Properties, LLC, and is located in the Historic Limited Business Zoning District. The future land use map in the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for commercial uses. Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
If the applicant is present, if you'll come to the lectern, you'll have 10 minutes to explain your application. Please state your name and your address, please.
My name is Christopher Slater. I live at 226 Maryland Avenue, Portsmouth, Virginia, 23707. This is my wife, Susan. She also lives there with me. We live about a block and a half from the proposed site. When I first moved into our neighborhood about 15 years ago, my realtor took me down to the sweet shop. And it was one of those things, when we drove through our downtown district, that really captured me, really made me want to move into that neighborhood. Because at that point in time, we had an independent bookstore, like two coffee shops and a bunch of eateries down there, and it made that feel so special and unique. After the bypass went through, a lot of those places have kind of dried up, and our downtown district even lost its stoplight. I mean, we've got, it just kind of shrunk down to nothing. We do have the pizza box, and there's some other places that are, there's a, Lee's Hot Dogs is being converted. So there's still some hope for down there. I've been teaching for 20 years, and I've been brewing for about 10. And my wife and I, when we go out on walks, we would look around and we'd see that space, and we'd be like, wow, this would be really cool for a brewery, because we're, we consider ourselves beer tourists. And we go around to all the neighborhood, like local breweries, and we even go on beer trips to other Virginia breweries. And we go in there, we're like, why can't we do this? What is, what is it about this? Why can't we do this? So we decided a couple months ago that we were going to give it a try. We wanted to go down there and bring back a little bit of that charm that was lost when the bypass went through, giving us kind of a neighborhood center, a central place where, with a low bar of entry, where our neighbors could just stop in, have a pint, have a drink with kids, dogs, bikes, whatever, just be a comfortable location for our neighbors to get together without having to worry about, you know, dinner reservations and seating and all that sort of stuff. Very casual space. Part of the space we've also kind of designated as kind of a flexible space that we can use for community events, because our neighborhood does really cool things. We have a zombie run in October. We have a porch crawl. We have all kinds of really cool stuff, because we have fantastic neighbors. Our neighbors are just so wonderful in that area. And we just wanted to try to give them a space that they can utilize and a space that we can just kind of have our community come together, just a centralized place for us to hang out. So what we're looking at is a three-barrel, three- to eight-barrel brewery, which works out to less than 500 barrels per year. It's going to be what we call a nimble brewery. It's going to have lots of different styles of beer on top. It's going to be constantly changing and so that people will always have something new to try when they come in. The trash and stuff, we'll be brewing like once a week, so it'll be very easy to do. It'll be less trash than a restaurant would produce. We're going to have basically one product that's going to go out, and that's called spent grain. And I'm going to be working with the neighborhood farmers and gardeners to see if they have any use for that. Farmers use it for their cows and chickens, and gardeners use it for compost. So I'm going to let them have first dibs at taking that back and doing some recycling with that. And we've already, today we stopped by Economic Development, and they were super helpful with us. Before I go too much further, I wanted to mention to you guys that every person that we've come in contact with in City Hall and zoning and everything has been super helpful to us. They've bent over backwards to take care of us and help us out. I thought, I just wanted to let you guys know that you've been hiring some great people down there, before I get too far and a little lost in my words. But we're just trying to set up a place, a space But we're just trying to set up a place, a space for our friends and neighbors to hang out and have a good time. And it's gonna be a working person's timeframe. We're gonna be closing at 10 o'clock, last call at 9:30. It's not gonna be late night stuff. We're gonna be opening up around 4:00 o'clock most days. Sundays, we're gonna wait until like after 1:00 so that the church has time to have their time. Trying to think what else. We did go down and walked around our neighborhood, and we talked to all the people that we could get ahold of in the neighborhood. We've been posting on social media, and it's been very positive. People are very excited about this space, the potential for this space. So we're excited about it, too. I hope that we can move forward with it.
Thank you, sir. Any questions by any member of counsel? The chair recognizes Councilman Glover.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Slater, do you all plan to serve food in this establishment?
No, we might have, we're talking about food trucks and connecting up with Pizza Box and the new restaurant that's opening up and having them provide food.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you so much. Thank you. Dr. Patton.
Yes, Mayor. Vice Mayor, members of council, we're gonna ask Mr. Bob Baldwin to come forward, please.
Thank you, and good evening once again. Again, as you're aware, this is a requested use permit to open up a microbrewery for, a reminder for members of council, this is a new land use that was implemented by the General Assembly back in 2014 and incorporated into our zoning ordinance. This is a small, small operation. This application originally went to the Planning Commission, their meeting on July the 2nd for public hearing. We determined there had been a glitch in the adjacent property owner notification, so we carried them over to, to the August meeting for, so they actually had two public hearings. We put them on your agenda for tonight, so we would not have caused them to lose any time in the application process. The Planning Commission, their meeting of August the 6th, voted seven to zero to recommend approval, subject to the conditions that are contained in your staff materials. Glad to answer any questions, if you have any.
Does any member of council have a question for Mr. Baldwin? Thank you, sir. Again, when I open the public hearing on U.P.-19-10, anybody that wants to speak, please come to the lectern and state your name and your address, and you'll have five minutes. This public hearing is now open. Does anybody want to speak at this public hearing on this matter? Does anybody want to speak at the public hearing on this matter? Hearing none, this public hearing is closed. And so that we can put this matter before us for consideration, is there a motion to approve?
Move adoption.
Second.
This matter is on its first reading. We have a motion to approve on its first reading. It's been seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 19-294, which is the consideration of a ordinance. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $160,000 from the Office of the Executive Secretary of the Supreme Court of Virginia and appropriating said funds in the FY 2020 Grants Fund for use by the Third Judicial Circuit Court for the Portsmouth Adult Drug Treatment Court.
Thank you. So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. We're ready for discussion. And we do have one registered speaker, and that's Donna Si. Ma'am, you'll have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Under City Manager's report, there's an ordinance, 19-294. The ordinance is to accept $160,000 from the Office of the Executive Secretary of the Supreme Court of Virginia. This money is given for the Year 2020 Grants Fund for use by the Third Judicial Circuit Court's Adult Drug Treatment Program. Let's review the history of drug courts to learn why they were created. Drug courts were established in 1989 in Miami, Florida, by the State Attorney General. The goal of the drug courts is to reduce drug abuse and crime by combining therapeutic treatment with the coercive structure of the court. The strategies of the drug courts are to provide a structured alternative to prison. The cost of treatment and prevention provided would cost less than the cost to incarcerate. Does the Portsmouth Drug Court have five phases for its program, like the one in eastern Pennsylvania? Their five phases include Phase One, an assessment and treatment plan. Phase Two includes group and individual treatment, weekly court hearings, probation officer meetings, case manager meetings, and attendance at AA 12-step recovery meetings daily. Phase Three continues the treatment and starts focusing on helping defendants develop life skills, especially those involving housing, education, employment, and transportation. Phase Four continues the life skills enhancement for the problem areas in the defendant, defendants' lives, such as employment and housing issues. Phase Five provides aftercare and follow-up measures for graduates. The plan will include misdemeanor charges will be expunged if the graduates are abstinent for one year after graduation and have no rearrest during this time. The graduates who are felony offenders will have to wait three years until their charges are expunged. Does the Portsmouth Drug Court have these five phases for its program? The people would know if Portsmouth Drug Court has the five phases if the clerk of the Circuit Court had an opportunity to give her report at a constitutional officer's work session. We, the people, are prevented from learning anything about the work being done by the constitutional officers. This ordinance, 19-294, demonstrates that work has been done behind the back of the people because the clerk of the Circuit Court has not been given the opportunity to tell we, the people, how much money is in the city's budget for drug treatment and prevention. And she has not been given the opportunity to let the people know how much money is being allotted to the police, to the community programs, and to the Sheriff's Department. My presentation demonstrates how the taxpayers are not kept informed on their use of their taxes. This secrecy needs to stop. We, the people, need transparency by all those elected. In addition to the City Council's agenda, there needs to be a constitutional officer's report as well as the City Manager's report.
We're considering the adoption of our ordinance.
We, the people, want to be elected to start implementing checks and balances to prevent all the corruption that is going on in this city.
Thank you, ma'am.
Corruption.
Any further discussion on this ordinance? Ready for the question, which is to adopt the ordinance? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 19-295, Boards and Commissions. And we do have a report. Councilman Moody?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of council, I move that the following appointments be approved. Community Criminal Justice Board, Police Chief Angela Green, Economic Development Authority, Barbara Smith, and Tabor Community College, Retired Admiral Mark Hugel.
Yes, sir. A second?
Second.
We have a motion that's been made to make these three appointments. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? All in favor, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 19-296, item submitted by council. And we do have the consideration of a resolution. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that resolution, please?
Yes, sir. A resolution amending subsection 17 of the Portsmouth City Council Rules of Order and Procedure pertaining to requests by citizens to address council.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to report. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Simms.
Thank you, sir. Couple of items of interest for the public. First and probably most importantly, tomorrow, the 14th of August, in partnership with the Hope Charitable Services, the Portsmouth Department of Social Services at 1701 High Street will have 4,000 pounds of corn, free ears of corn, available to the public. So that is from 10 to 5, tomorrow, the 14th of August, at Social Services. They are ears of corn, they are not cans or bags. On Thursday is the Normal Sunset Thursday Concert at the foot of High Street. And this Thursday, from 6:30 PM to 9:00 PM, the band is the Michael Clarke Band. We have a graphic that's been out on social media quite a bit recently that gives you a whole list of phone numbers to use in addition to our new 311 service for all sorts of city services like lights out, stray dogs, new recycling or waste cans, potholes, that sort of thing. And then we have information out on our Back to School Week, August 24th through 30th. There is a whole week of activities. And then the parades that will take place at many of the different schools. The Back to School Parade will be at 10:00 AM on Saturday, August 24th, from Godwin Avenue to I.C. Norcombe High School. If you'd like more information on some of the activities at the different schools, you can call 393-5143. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Which brings us to item 19-297, Report on Pending Items. Dr. Patton.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, I will make this a report on behalf of our envious woman. There were seven non-agenda speakers. One speaker required action by staff. Mr. John Hooks advised City Council that the basketball courts located in the Mount Herman Playground area are in need of repair. The Department of Engineering is currently determining the scope of the work and an estimate to provide an upgrade to the playground. There has also been communication with Citizen Hook.
Thank you, ma'am. Which now brings us to non-agenda speakers. And before we start that, Madam Clerk, will you read the council rules pertaining to non-agenda speakers, please?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, all rules shall be directed to City Council as a body rather than to any particular member of City Council, staff, and the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence.
And would you read our normal protocol again for speakers?
Yes, sir. City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Our first speaker is Ken Saucer. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe. Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, members of council, Dr. Patton. My name is Ken Saucer, and I live in the Castle Heights neighborhood of Churchland. I don't come to City Council meetings often since I retired from the Police Department. But I feel compelled to speak to you about the troubling public tweets of Mr. Moody regarding people of color. I meant to quote Mr. Moody directly, but it appears he's removed his tweets, which is a good thing. I still feel an obligation to speak out about this. I made a pledge to my friends to confront racism whenever I see it. Mr. Moody said that he's tired of the term "people of color." And yes, Mr. Moody, telling people, "Go back to where you came from," is racist. Let me remove that doubt from your mind. Mr. Moody quoted Martin Luther King, who had a dream of a day when people of color, or when people would not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. Martin Luther King was murdered over 50 years ago. We still have a long way to go. A friend of mine offered me another quote by Dr. King. "In the end, we will remember not the words of our enemies, but the silence of our friends." So here I am tonight. Mr. Moody, it's the rich diversity of City Council that makes, or of the City of Portsmouth that makes us great. That includes people of color. My wife and I chose to move here in 1995, and we love this city. We love its rich history, and we love its people. We're still here after 24 years. I'm obligated to my black friends to point out that the people of color of our city are tired of the culture of white supremacy that Mr. Moody's tweets represent. They are tired of being tired. They're tired of the monument to racism at the corner of Court and High Streets, which is less than a block from our children's museum. What must a black family think when they come to Portsmouth for the first time? When they bring their kids to the children's museum for the first time, and they have to explain that monument? Miss Simms, I love you, but I'm troubled that when a black woman asked you during a council meeting to say "black lives matter," you couldn't say it. You said "all lives matter." Part of me suspects it was for fear of offending our friends who are white police officers. Well, I'm here to tell you, black lives matter. I could say it. The building didn't fall. I wasn't hit by lightning. I don't love the master-at-arms or Detective Cat any less now than I did before I said "black lives matter." White members of council, when you can say "black lives matter" and really believe it, when you truly believe it, the City of Portsmouth will be a better place. The people of color in Portsmouth are tired of our ignorance. And I do have a suggestion. Virginia Organizing is offering their services to you. They would be willing to conduct a dismantling racism workshop for you and whoever you invite. I can provide you contact information for Virginia Organizing, if you'd like. They will do it for free. You may learn something about yourselves, and the City of Portsmouth will be better for it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. The chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. South, you, thank you for being here tonight. My comments, my tweet, were directed to four members of the House of Representatives. And it was directed to their comments. I don't know if you have any problem. I'm gonna read these, these comments, these quotes for them. The first one is Representative Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez. Okay, "The Jewish community, by comparing migrant facilities at the U.S. border to concentration camps..." Those words matter, I think you would agree. She also called the Immigration and Customs Enforcement Director, Mark Morgan, someone who ran concentration camp systems. Concentration camps, in my mind, are associated with Nazi Germany, not with the United States of America. As a veteran, Air Force veteran, if you may, I found that to be totally offensive. Representative Amman Omar, quote, "Israel has hypnotized the world. May Allah awaken the people and help them see the evil doings of Israel." Most people would say that's anti-Semitic. I found that to be highly offensive. She also claimed pro-Israel members of Congress owed allegiance to a foreign country. Representative Rashida Tlaib, Representative Tlaib called Housing and Urban Development official Lynn Patton, who happens to be a black woman, a prop for appearing in the gallery during a hearing where members of council, Congress, were debating whether Trump was a racist. Representative Leander Presley, Representative Presley told left-wing bloggers of NetRoots Nation, "We don't need any more black faces. They don't want to be a black voice." I find that to be highly offensive. Also, on her official website, she implies that a white, white person cannot represent her congressional district. Those four are collectively known as the- as the Squad. As a patriot of this country, as someone who has served this country in uniform, I found those remarks to be highly offensive. My comments, which have been taken out of context, was that they say things like this, then they go and hide behind their ethnicity. I find that to be highly offensive. Also, those who have attacked me, you implied that I'm a white supremacist and a racist. I find that to be highly offensive, Mr. Sauer. You don't know it, but I'm gonna inform you and the rest of people in this audience. When a group of African-Americans wanted to move the, what was known as the Colored Library, back in the day, when they wanted to move it from the courtyard, I was one of the ones that they approached to support it. I met with them initially. I supported it. You also don't know that I served at May Breckenridge's request on the board of the Colored Library, up until my job prevented me from attending meetings. You also probably don't know that I'm probably the only white member of City Council that ran three times with African-American in this community, two times with my beloved colleague, Charles Whitehurst, one time with Ms. Marlene Randall, who's a renowned educator, and having known both of those people, they would not associate with a white supremacist, nor would they associate with a racist. I also was approached and made aware of the dilapidated condition of the swimming pool and the tennis court at Cavalier Manor Civic League Recreation Facility. I supported both of those. In fact, I added that they were deplorable. I also stood up when the city wanted to close the swimming pool one summer. That you don't know either. Also, there was a high school at one time during the Jim Crow era called a Norfolk County High School, when the citizens and former people who attended that school wanted someone to support putting a marker on the site where that school was located. They came to me. I supported it, and they invited me for a number of years to their recognition of that event, almost like a high school reunion, if you may. So no, you don't know me, and I take offense to you calling me a racist or inferring that I'm a white supremacist because you don't know me. Words do matter, okay? And words matter when they're taken out of context, but actions speak loudly. So thank you again for being here. Hope to see you again.
The Chair recognizes Councilman Glover. You meet me, Seaton.
Mr. Saucer, please, please stay. One of the things that I want to say to you as a councilman and as a servicemember as well, who has served my country, I too was greatly offended by the words of my colleague, who has yet to offer an apology to members of this council. And the reason I was offended, and he may say that his comments were directed to some foreign individuals, the reality is the fact that he's tired of hearing about people of color. I said it before in the council meeting prior, that some of those people of color in the City of Portsmouth actually voted for him. I too grew up in a community that was very diverse, and I can tell you that I have friends that are of the other persuasion. The fact that he can denote these things that he's done, and I applaud them, that doesn't excuse the behavior. He represents all of the citizens of the City of Portsmouth, and for him to use hurtful and demeaning language is unacceptable. And that's all I need to say.
Thank you, sir. The Chair recognizes Councilman Paddle.
I'm gonna use a, an example, one example. And before I do that, I want us to understand that I know we have cultural differences, and I know that I have a responsibility to be kind to all folk. But when you reach down into the bag and you say, one person's analogy of what's going on at our borders is, is in relation to Nazi Germany. Now, with the different cultures and philosophies and the different thoughts that people have, it is. It is like Nazi Germany, because when you separate a man and a woman from their children, you're worse than Nazi Germany. Now, a lot of times, we do things, and we are not aware, and we might not intend to do things to harm other folk, but what we do do indicate that we're racist. And we have to be kind with what we say. We have a wonderful country. We can say anything we want, but we should say kind things to one another and carry our aggressions and displaced aggressions where they belong. I took offense as well. But he's my colleague, and he has the right to think like that, and I, as a human being, has to the right or the responsibility to treat him with respect and dignity, and hope and pray that one day he'll become aware and care of how other people feel when you're saying things. Thank you.
Mr. Sauer, you can sit down.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
No, no, let's let him sit down, and you can have the floor. Okay. Go ahead, sit down, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Vice, Vice Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Saucer. As you take your seat, I want to thank you for your bravery in coming forth and speaking the words that you spoke tonight. It has been our sentiment to get this kind of language and this kind of dialogue out, and I'm very pleased to see that someone else of another color has come forth to express what the black community has wanted to say. A lot of times, our black citizens come forth and feel like their words fall on deaf ears, or their comments don't matter, or what they're saying is not being heard. So it was very heartwarming to have you come and speak the things that we felt in the same manner that we felt. And one of the conversations that we've had with council on creating a cultural harmony community, what I say it because I know I'm a psychology major, and I've set on a community, a forum, a board with Virginia Humanities, where we work with racial equity and differences in our community, and I say that we needed a professional organization to come forth and to help us with this. We're not that smart on thinking that we could come together and to just create a group in the community and expect them to get it right. So I would be willing to take the information, and I hope that our council would be willing to receive the information to have Virginia Organization, Virginia organizing, to help us to come together and have this forum that we desperately need to have with our community so that we can all begin the process of healing. So thank you.
Thank you. And I'll sum it up. From my perspective, yours might be different, yours to the general public, I consider us all to be children of God, children of God with different pigmentation, and we need to celebrate that difference. We need to celebrate that pigmentation. And I think the term "people of color" is a very appropriate term to use. It should not be banned. It should not be demeaned. It's what we should celebrate. It's what ties people together. And I, for one, I, for one, am intolerant of racism of any type at all, whether it's words or action. And I ask all the citizens of Portsmouth to love one another. If you believe, like I do, I don't mind telling you that I'm a Christian, there are two commandments: Love God and love your neighbor as yourself. And we need to learn to do that and celebrate our pigmentation and celebrate people of color. Thank you. We'll go on to the next speaker, and that's Marcus Hunt. And, sir?
Ma'am?
Oh, okay. Our next speaker is Antoinette Keenan, and if I've mispronounced her first name, I apologize. Ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, and Vice, Vice, and all the members of councils. I'm standing here as a parent of a fifteen-year-old with a lot of mental issues. My son suffered from several different disorders, so I had him placed into a residential facility. In doing so, after several tries of different places that would not take him, why I have no understanding of that, because if they're for behavior or they're for mental problems, that's their profession, but they would not take my son. Be it as may, I got him into Riverside Behavioral Health, and within four days, I would say, they requested that I pick this child up. And I'm asking why, because the, the main thing was to get him into residential treatment right from there. They had, came to me and asked me, was I interested in residential? I said, absolutely. They told me that they were a cute residential place, but next to them, adjacent to them, was a residential that they could potentially get this child into. If not, they would be willing to help me find another place. Subsequently to that, my son entered a young lady room that he was invited into and had inappropriate relationship with her more than once. At that particular time, they told me to pick up my child, but the young lady was able to stay. Now, she was there before him and still was there after him. CPS got involved because I went there to pick up my son, and I said, because this has happened, I asked for my son to be medically tested for diseases and everything else, and told them, I did not send my son here for a sex escapade. I sent my son here for treatment. So they told me to come back the next day. I came back the next day when we were requested at six o'clock. They chose not to let me leave the facility, or through three locked doors, they left me behind there claiming, "Do not let her leave. She's leaving her son." When I got there, my son's paperwork weren't done. My son's clothes couldn't be found. His shoes couldn't be found, and no explanation to what his testing results were. They just wanted him out of there. I had just had surgery the day, the day before, and I told them that I was having surgery the day before. Couldn't take pain medicine, driving over the bridge, waiting there two days in a row. After this, the bottom line is, my child was taken in by CPS and said that I had charges on me of abandonment, neglect, and all these other charges that I incurred. After this was said, and finally getting to court and things, I was supposed to have a meeting with my son on a six, the Social Service said, "You don't have a meeting with him." I couldn't understand that, but I left. In court, the judge asked, "Where was the child?" CPS says, "Oh, he's not here? I thought the child might have been outside. He wasn't there." Come to find out, my child has been MIA from CPS Care, Foster Care, and everyone else, and to this day, I still never got a report from CPS, Social Service, PO, or anybody that my son was missing or MIA. Then it was brought to my attention that, "Oh, we believe that you may have a unnatural relationship with your child." I said, and then they said to me that my child, I don't want him. I said, "First of all, this is not my biological child. I took this child out of Foster Care and adopted him in January." I said, "So, being that he's not my child, and I would take him without a dime. I don't get paid a dime for this child. I don't even get a food stamp. You tell me I don't love him, and that I'm having some unnatural relationship with the child? That's your only answer?" But to right now, no one could tell me where my child is. I found out my child was MIA from a detective that called me and said, "Your child is being charged when we find him," with some other charges of breaking and entering, other things that he has done while he's out in the street trying to survive. My son is fifteen. I have no idea where he's at. My son has been diagnosed with things that they can't even label him with until he's eighteen. My son is basically becoming a menace.
Ma'am, your time is up, and I'll ask, Dr. Patton, will you have one of your deputies meet with the speaker and get the pertinent information? Ma'am, if you will, Deputy City Manager Lavoris Pace will meet with you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mark Adolgi Yotrowski, and sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow interested parties. So on July thirtieth in this chamber, two economic consultants appeared and made a presentation about casinos at your request. I have serious concerns about the process that brought them before you. Because of legislation that the General Assembly passed in its last session, we're in the midst of a Jay-Lark study of casino gambling, casino gaming in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Portsmouth is one of five localities in the Commonwealth that could potentially host a casino, or casinos, based on what happens along the way. Part of what has to happen is, the General Assembly has to approve moving forward, once the Jay-Lark study has been released, and the governor has to sign off, and then there has to be a referendum in each candidate locality. So here, my tax dollars are being spent to hire not one consultant, but I discovered in examining the contract for the consulting group that was represented here on the thirtieth, that they're just subcontractors, that the city's actual contract is within another group, a law firm, and at this point, I have no idea how much money that is costing me as a taxpayer. And so, without all of the prerequisites having been met, to have gaming legalized in the Commonwealth, City Council has given at least tacit approval to spending of, at this point, some hundred thousand dollars of our money, and additional unknown sums, which I hope to, to have a figure, a definite figure on shortly. And what are they actually doing? The presentation that was given here was incomplete. I consider it inadequate. They talked about entertainment facilities in the local area. They mentioned two entertainment facilities, Chrysler Hall and the Norva Theater. Well, anybody who lives here knows that that- Well, anybody who lives here knows that that's not the scope of competing entertainment venues in our immediate vicinity. One of them, right now, is out of operation, and it's our own facility, the Pavilion. And across the river, there's this little place called the Constant Center, and then there's the Addicts Theater, and the Wilder Performing Arts Center at Norfolk State University. So there are quite a number of venues in our immediate area, without even crossing the line to Virginia Beach. Those weren't spoken about in terms of the viability of an entertainment district. But the other thing is, this money seems to be going to pay people to lobby those of us who are set against casinos, and you're using our tax dollars to do it, without having met the prerequisites for legalization of casino gambling. I consider that misappropriation, and I object to it, and I want it to cease. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Sergio O'Neil, and sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, and my fellow neighbors here in the city of Portsmouth. My name is Sergio O'Neil, and I live in Cavalier Manor. Before I start my initial comments, I will say this: If you all don't know Ken Saucer, I would suggest you get to know him. He served this city for a long time as a police officer, but he is a person of very fair judgment, a very, a very good mindset. My first interaction with him was when he was the SRO at Churchland High School, when I was a student there. And I, I don't think that nothing he said, you know, was to be taken out of context, but he, he is a, you know, he is a person of a very fair mindset. And it also disseminates this misnomer of that all white people can't speak on black issues. I heard, I saw a lot on social media, where a lot of people had a problem with what Mr. Moonley said, but as you can see right now, that gentleman that came up is a white man. So, some of us that spread this rumor about white people can't speak about black issues, but guess what? He just did. So I'm gonna make sure y'all watch this tape tonight, or watch, or find, or find it on PortsmouthCityWatch.org. Please do. Moving forward to where I originally came and spoke about, you know, we had a lot of violent crimes, a lot of shootings that have happened in this city. And my question to you all is, what are we going to do next? You know, I see, you know, Newport News has moved forward with technology to find gunshots. I was in a technology workshop early, you know, regarding safety, because part of my job is safety, on a school campus in Virginia Beach. Is, that technology is not 100% effective, but it's a right, it's a step in the right direction. It helps our, helps officers, you know, kind of pinpoint where gunshots are being fired, so they can respond to that location and actually find a more definitive pinpoint of where the shot was fired from. You know, what, you know, we have to think about the 21st century and what's, you know, coming out, you know, what, what's helping our officers, you know, fight this violent crime. But the other piece of that is, what are we doing on the, on the more proactive side? You know, a lot of times, you know, you, you see, you know, we have the reset walks, and, you know, I'm not, you know, knocking what has happened, but, you know, what are we doing more on the proactive side? You know, what are we doing, you know, to engage the public, you know, from a leadership standpoint? You know, a lot of times, then, then the sad piece is, a lot of these shootings that are happening right now in our city are committed by people under the age of 18. We have to figure out, what is, what is driving the mindset for them to get their hands on guns? What, what is driving their mentality that this is all, this is my only lifestyle? You know, what are we doing to grab those kids and bring them into a, a positive mindset to keep them as productive citizens in our society, versus being the ones incarcerated or being the ones that we have to bury? You know, we, we can't keep, you know, pushing, you know, kind of turning a blind eye to the issue before, guess what? Before Parkland happens in the city of Portsmouth. Because, see, you know, these kids start off small, they start shooting each other, but then, you know, what is it going to take for the next one to say, as a child, let me go and shoot a mass amount of people? You know, what, what mentality are they being exposed to? That's going to trigger them from the small-scale stuff to the big-scale stuff? You know, we, we can start challenging their mindsets now, putting the resources in the community, letting our parents know that, you know, they have these places, you know, for, for them to turn to for help. But we shouldn't always be in a reactionary state. You know, it, you know, all of this stuff that's going on around the country is a sign that we need to start paying more attention. You know, finding out, that, you know, letting our young people know that what, what's going on is not where we want to see you all end up. Too many families have to bury their loved ones. It's too, it's, it hurts me to say, you know, that, you know, it seems like we're kind of stuck. You know, we can't always be in a reactionary state, we have to be more proactive. So I'm asking you all, as city council members, you know, our mayor and our city manager, you know, what else can be done? Because we can't always just wait until after the fact. We have to get there before the fact, so we can start preventing. As the saying goes, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. So, you know, let's, let's get there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our last speaker is Gary Johnson, and sir, you have five minutes.
Attention, city council, my name is Gary Jackson. Pretty much I'm here, because I'm, what I'm trying to do is get, like, pretty much a recommendation or support, because I see the census jobs that came up lately, and I'm trying to get a, a real good job, a government job, and I've really been trying, because I'm, I myself, I've been living the truth for a long time now. I've been an intelligent person, really intelligent person, great young man, model citizen, working here, and in this area, and I've been in Portsmouth all my life, and I worked a lot of jobs, and I went to school here in Portsmouth. I took, I took up accounting when I was young, 12, at 12-years-old. And when I was 12-years-old, I took accounting, and I decided, you know, to finish, you know, my diploma, I got an advanced diploma, and what I ended up doing was, I went to Norfolk State, and I took, I took up Norfolk, you know, I took accounting in Norfolk State. I graduated with a, a county degree. And basically what I did, I just, you know, I did everything I tried to do, you know, positive, and I tried to help people out in this area as much, much I can. I did incredible steps, y'all, to, 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 you know, to help people and all I could. And I feel like, you know, I need to be at, up another level, and I, I feel like that I'm, I'm not where I want to be, but what I'm trying to say, I don't want to be forcing nobody, but I would love to get some recommendation, or some type of support, or something, so I pretty much can move up. And I've been starting a lot of things, I, I did my own speaker business, while I'm trying to speak, to help people. And I'm trying to further my career goals, and like I said, I'm trying, I'm trying to make it all about me, I'm just trying to help people as much I can, because I'm, I'm an intelligent guy. And intelligent people don't need to be, you know, pretty much, we need to be, you know, helping people. We need to be out here supporting people, or helping the young ones, or, I mean, it's a lot of things out here that I can do, and, you know, that's, that's my, I want to push my career goals, and I'm only, I'm still a young man, a young man myself, but like I said, I want to pursue my opportunities and, and do a business, and, and I said, some kind of a recommendation, I said that census job that I seen would have been great, anything, I've been volunteering my time over the years, too. I volunteered many, many places to work over the years, and I worked like, you know, four different jobs. So I done worked so, so many jobs in this area, like, I did blue-collar jobs, I did white-collar jobs, took places, I mean, I done worked a lot of different places, you know? So that's basically what, you know, I'm trying to do, is, is trying to, you know, do that. So right here, I want to let y'all know, that still, people out here are trying to work hard and, and live great, and do, and be good, good citizens out here. Everybody, you know, is not, need to be categorized, and like, you know, we lazy, no, I'm, I'm not lazy at all myself. But I'm just saying that, you know, but like I said, I'm gonna leave this here for y'all, it's an old saying, you know, it's an old saying like from a while back, it says, see, our minds are trepidating to waste. And it is, when you're a smart person, and you can't, you know, pretty much move up. So, thank you for your time, okay?
Thank you. Dr. Patton, could you have the appropriate person talk to this gentleman about workforce development, please?
Yes, Mr. LaVores Pace will talk with the citizens.
Thank you. All right, with that, we completed our agenda, and this meeting is adjourned.